Everyone please stand with Wes to our committee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes of March 2nd, 2022 and March 8th, 2022?
Yes, I will approve the minutes of March 2nd, 2022, but probably not the 8th because I took them. So if somebody else needs to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve the 8th.
I'll second.
You're going to second the...
Second them.
Second, you're going to second the 8th.
Well, he wanted us to make it simple, Debbie will just second both of them.
Debbie's going to second both of them?
Yeah.
All those papers say aye?
Aye.
I was thinking, how was that supposed to go?
For both. Shane?
I don't really have a lot, a little bit busy. I served a girl breast already. Couple of hearts are down, looking in a little bit right now. One of them's a current go, they did extend it one, you know? It's probably a good transition, so luck out there.
Already though.
It's five years old, though.
It is.
Isn't really that old?
Yeah, it's got almost 100,000 on it, so.
I've already been telling you to look.
Actually, price is supposed to be at the price of one today, so. On the fall.
But it is under 100.
It is, for two more weeks.
Do you have a second?
We lucked out there.
If they have to order the park, will it still?
Yeah. That is the extent of it.
Whose is it?
Max's. So that is all this time we have. That's all we've got, been busy.
Thank you for everything you all do.
Thank you.
Audience call, you ladies have anything?
This is our first time, we've come to observe.
You just want to listen?
We're observers, we're for the first time, we may talk later.
Oh, I'm sure.
We're observing today.
I'm sure.
Don't be looking away in that corner, boy.
I bet you'll gain your confidence by the end of the meeting, I just have this feeling. You don't want to turn back around to audience.
Scott, you're up.
Okay. Well, we've got all the lawnmowers here, it's got all the lawnmowers ready to go for this spring, new blades, everything. Service the track, track break up for a year service. I've been kind of working at the treatment plant for a couple of weeks, something that you caught up down there and...
How's the suds down there going? Get it figured out?
A little better, yeah, we had it, I sent the suds to Pennsylvania, had it analyzed and drip feeding bleach to return. We've done that about 15 years now. So it seems to be slowly coming around. It never was out of compliance by no means, but it had some phoning issues. And I did get the quote for the generator for College Hills, just so happened last week we lost power out there, but it was only off less than an hour. But it's 22.5 for that...
That particular issue.
College Hills.
From where?
From where though?
Ponder Electric, that's who done one for Tomans and he said, actually this is a smaller generator than the one they had to put at Tomans, but with prices on everything. He said, they keep going up, so he said the longer you wait, the harder it gets. That one doesn't have much holding time, so, yeah, you know. Greenbrier and Goldenrod is good, we would never have an issue as long as Rogers still pump them, but Tomans and College Hills were the two that if we lost power, would be a problem and we have one at Tomans, so I don't know about the funding part, but I highly recommend the sewer there.
Yeah.
That's, yeah. I know you guys have had money going out for the engineering and stuff, but...
That's what Scott and I shared with is, you know, our capital, if you remember whenever we made the decision to not take out the short-term loan for our project, for the engineering, all the other work that we've done, we decided to say instead of borrowing short-term loan at 3% and have money sitting in the account earning .4%, it made more sense to utilize our cash on hand, if something arises that we need money from that fund, use it or what have you. So it's not like we're out of funds, but we've committed a lot of our funds to this stage. Feel great about the SRF loan closing by June 30th, but I just want to make sure I told Scott, I feel more comfortable to have you guys realize that, that it might put us into taking some of those reserves short-term to put back whenever the SRF funding comes back and we get our account flushed again, but I want you to be aware of that now rather than later.
Well, this is something we definitely need to do.
So this is for which one, Tomans or...
We've got one at Tomans, this is for College Hills.
In College Hills, has it never had a backup generator? No, never.
And it has, doesn't have very much holding time.
I see.
You know, it wouldn't take...
Too much.
Especially Tomans, if they quit right now, tadic right now, and if it quit for an hour, it'd be running hurt. So...
So this is something we really need to do.
Well, it's recommended from the state.
Okay.
You know, I would recommend it.
I definitely would be.
We've talked about it plenty of times.
Yeah, it was, I think that's why I went ahead and got a quote, if I remember, I was asked to go ahead and get prices together. I mean, I just got one from Troy, because he does all of our electrical work, so.
And you know it's for...
He'll come whatever time of the day or any day of the week.
Were you at our last meeting with Weslers when they were talking about a generator and the estimate, just to kind of put it in perspective, the lift station over at the campus, the proposed cost for that, for a generator on site over at the campus, it's going to have about a $12,000 silencer blinking or whatever, or it could be speaking wrong, whatever it's called.
You have to copy us, so it doesn't...
You don't hear the sound, I guess.
Disturb the college.
But point is, they estimated around $80,000 for generator, backup generator with that, and that you take $12,000 off of that, so you're running $68,000, and Troy's got an estimate for one installed, hooked up, ready to go, it was all in for about 22.
22.5.
So that is installed and everything?
So one comes down to it, we like to hang them installed, one at College too.
Yeah.
We just tripped off about $60,000 in that project, we allocate it, so.
And they're quiet?
Well, the one at Tomans, you know, and I wouldn't, I would not be opposed to recommending we did something like that at that location too, given that it's in the...
But it's not going to run all the time?
It's only a backup, though.
It's a backup?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not going to run all the time.
It's only a backup, just in case something happens.
It's an emergency.
Right.
And they keep on running.
The one they have at the Science Center, the backup generator, when it kicks on, it's not quiet.
You hear it all the way in.
Neither is the lift station up the street from it, it's not quiet. But it doesn't run all the time.
So is this something we should own up to now?
Well, it depends on if you're ready to buy.
You're talking to me? Be up to you guys, tell me if you want to buy.
I think this is a good price, I mean, I don't, I think we should, I think we should vote on it, so we can, because we don't want it running into the creek and...
Yeah, it made me kind of nervous last week, when I went over there.
And we're looking at times now when the weather's going to start getting bad with the, you know, so electric going out.
I'm not concerned fund wise, I'm just letting you know fund wise, I mean, the fund is in front of you, you can see what's in it. Sewer operating, second page, 606, you can see wastewater operating, if you slide all the way over to the right side.
607?
You can see the, if you look, third column, 606, third column to the, from the right, currently have $104,000 in that fund. It's not like it's running over, so, but we have...
Not like it used to be.
$355,000 in sitting in the account earning .4%, which if that thing spills over and I didn't come down, it would cost a lot more, maybe $200,000 probably. If it's been recommended for some time, I think...
So the price that he's quoted us with, how much?
22.5.
22.5?
That's installed, delivered.
Installed and when, when will he start that? What's the timeframe on it, do you know?
Immediately, I'd assume, I mean, I...
I didn't hear it later, I wasn't involved in that conversation, you just shared it today with me, so.
I can text as soon as you give it up, Bill, you know?
Well, and the ones working, still working.
No, we don't have one on this one.
No, not a backup, but they're not without anything.
No, no.
Yeah.
So it's not like tomorrow they got to stick it in there.
It's been there for how many years, without one?
Long time.
It was there when I came in 92, so.
So it's not going to go down, watch it go down tonight now, but... Well, I will make a motion to buy a backup generator for College Hills in an amount of $22,500 from the sewer plan. Thanks, I'll second.
I'll say aye.
Any more discussion? All those papers say aye?
Aye.
If you have any complaint, if you hear of any complaints, I am going to clean the gutters at November, October, Sharp, Glad, Maple, Sycamore, with Bobcat, dumpster, tobacco, and we got a street prun that we purchased with Bobcat. So I'm going to, I am going to do that, it's probably going to take like, no interruptions, probably three, four days to do all of it. But our plan will do it, so if anybody is setting, I mean, it is on my list. And it does need it, so they have a right to complain, I just...
It just sits there, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, that's what a guy was complaining the other day, I said, everybody has stopped up their driveway, which we're going to try to get a community crossing grant to help that, but when you stop all these driveways up, it has nowhere to go. Sell out.
The street, the street that's really bad is the one leading back to Rainbow Park.
Yes.
It's awful.
All that is, it's... You'd be surprised when I start scraping it, how much silt and dirt it runs out of. Didn't take long to fill a dumpster, yeah. But that's all I have, if you guys have any more questions, any questions?
Well, that was enough, it costs us. I mean, I hope you don't have any more.
Thanks.
So I have a, just a quick question, I spoke with the nuisance officer and he instructed me to come here and voice my opinion. What exactly are the ordinances for large vehicles or vehicles sitting on the side of streets or in people's yards that have been there extended time?
Can I ask what your address is?
I live at 23 Bolles Drive and my next door neighbor has a very large purple bus.
Yeah, I see that every time I go by my house and I'm just complaining.
We started twice today.
It's not only the purple bus, but they also have another car, and it has a plate on it, I'm not sure about it.
In the driveway?
Out in the road.
And then the house across from it has two, and then you're kind of going like this, and you go down the road, every day.
When I back out of my driveway, it's hard to see, you know, around that. Not only that, the other car, if I take my kids for a bike ride, the car, if their car's coming this way or that way, and they fly when they come off that highway, if they don't see someone because of the cars, I mean, it's going to cause an accident one day, but I don't know if it's...
I was told that the bus is going to be getting addressed.
I think papers have been sent.
That's what I was told, and they're not getting any response.
That's the last I heard, I think he was supposed to talk with Deb and further about that situation.
It doesn't have a license plate on it, it's been standing there for two years.
Two years?
Yeah, it was in the street.
Shane finally got it on the street.
Got it on the street. But, I mean, I thought we...
Because the new ordinance...
I thought they couldn't park along the street.
They can't. They can't be in their yard like that either. They can't be in their yard.
Right, but they also can't park on the street either, because that, I thought that was something that we passed.
And that's what Shane used to get them on the street, when we got that ordinance.
Last I knew, he had sent them certified mail and he was supposed to talk to Deb, and so I don't know.
So what, what can we do about, when you see a car parked all the time in the street, can we cite them, can we, I mean, what are we doing?
Could a fire truck get through there?
Because I thought we were going to buy signs that said, "No parking on the street," and put those down through there, and then that never happened.
And I'm not talking about somebody that's just visiting somebody for a little bit.
We know exactly why we're not.
When you've seen it for a long time, and it's like, if I go around my entire neighborhood, there's, it's everywhere, so I just... And I know that that affects people's home value, if you want to sell, and then you have somebody come to look at your property, they look around, not only that, or this person has a junkyard, you know?
I actually talked to him about that when he got out of jail, and he said he was going to move it, well, he's back in jail, so.
Oh, no.
So Shane, if it doesn't have a plate, it's unplated or unregistered or anything, and it's sitting on the road, is that fair game for towing, or is...
We need to get marked.
It's got to be stickered even in that case, I mean, I know a licensed vehicle, but, okay.
Because we passed that ordinance and then he went and got that off the street.
When I'm with Debbie, I thought signs were supposed to be put up.
They were, yeah, signs were supposed to be put up that said, "No parking on the street."
And that never happened?
I've never heard, so.
Yeah, do you remember us talking about that? We did the no children, we did the, and you talked about the no parking along the street, and you said we were going to order them once that got passed, and then it got passed, and I think it got forgotten, then...
Yeah.
Because we talked about, what if they were having a birthday party, we make, you know, exception or whatever. So we talked about it.
Would you like no parking signs, no parking along the street?
No extended parking.
Well, no parking. Wouldn't do extended, I just do no.
Yeah, we just say no parking. I mean, and then if...
I mean, you're going to know, obviously, if you drive by and you see a few cars outside, and then an hour or two later, they're gone, and it was just...
That street, a lot of kids ride their bikes on it, they're on their skateboards, and when there's cars parking there and you're trying to weave through and they dart out in front of you.
Just a street over from that, in that same subdivision, Debbie and I had a little kid down the street today come out.
Right, right.
There's a lot of kids there.
Yeah.
That's a busy street, so if you want to...
It's extremely busy, and I'm constantly having to rein the kids in because there's a car.
Yeah.
I just, I didn't, I wanted to check, I didn't know if it was okay, then I was like, I'll park RVs in my front yard and rent them out.
Yeah, no, it's not, so.
So do you want to talk to Rick to make sure the papers were served?
The papers were served.
But he needs to talk to Deb and yet?
And he's had several of those, like we suspected it would be. And he's got a list, and he's compiling, we've actually talked about it in the day, so I told him, you can only do so much on your side, move them along, the council's instructed that we'll move forward with them, so give them off and let's move to the next step.
In the ordinance, any vehicles that's visible from the road that's been sitting there a long period of time without license tags, the two across the street's been sitting there for 15 years, they got...
Well, that one, he has been in and talked to Rick about that, there's legal issues with those, so I don't know where that's going to play.
Well, we will definitely...
I mean, the street's getting known as, oh, the street with the purple bus, you know, I mean...
We just heard that today from my friend.
If it moved every now and then, like if they took it camping for the summer and came back, but it doesn't, it, you know, it just stays there. And I have, I never know when there's anybody there, because I can't see around it.
Yeah, a lady that was with us today was trying to find her house the other day, and she said, "I couldn't find the purple bus."
Yeah, I was looking for the purple bus, finding the street to get it to your house, and I'm like, gosh, that's...
That's terrible.
It is, it is, and I know if I just was to go over and knock on the door, that I'd probably just get told no, so, and then...
No, you're doing the right thing, okay, we appreciate it.
So you're going to order signs?
Which, how many signs would you like for me to order?
I, you know, I can order signs.
I think, why don't, why don't you have Shane tell you the areas that are really bad, that you need to get, to get it taken care of?
Probably not just that, it's true.
No, it's not.
No, I wouldn't think, I was saying...
That's what I'm saying, so let...
So you need to put signs out of neighborhood?
Sycamore, Maple, and North Sycamore.
Yeah, Maple.
Did we do all roads, or was it just certain roads?
No, I think we did all roads.
I know it's hard to push snow on them streets, because there's...
If there's cars, they're all...
Yeah, I drove around a car, October, November, I mean, I know they have small driveways, but...
Right, right.
I mean, I don't...
But you also have to think the fire trucks, are they able to get through some of that?
They'd be tight, because there's been some places just pushing.
Kids safety too.
It'll be simple, I'll have to set up a fine for it, so we can slide it.
That's right.
But if you put it on the beginning of each street, I guess Sycamore, Maple, and North Sycamore, there'd be three there, I figured, as soon as you pull off Thorn, if you see that sign there, that pretty much covers it, I would think, maybe not.
We can try that and then add more if we need it.
You know, probably order a dozen of them.
You got that, Scott?
Yeah, I'll get...
So Devin, what do we want to do about a fine?
I'm looking, I thought we...
I thought we did one.
No parking on the street.
Is it a fine, fines in there?
Is it? What is it? We'll just need to add that. Chapter 72, new ordinance. Apply C and Orange and Luxorbs. I'll send it to you, Shane. Okay. That'd be perfect.
You're up.
State board count's been in the office, as everybody knows, for the last couple of weeks, going well, haven't had any real eye catchers or anything at this point. They're still gathering information, going through the process, great, we just sent the letter off to Deb, so that's a good sign, we're nearing our end, they're getting ready to schedule a closing meeting, so exit interview, so as soon as we do that, I'll give you guys more information. Obviously, you guys will be a part of all that, obviously, so it's my first one, so it's been interesting, but not, it's been pretty uneventful, which has been good too, so. Nothing really much to say there or do, obviously, Scott brought up what we're going to talk about with the sewer, we agreed on that with the purchase, I wanted to make sure on the monies that everybody knew that. As far as the town administrator, I wanted to share a couple of updates and thoughts with you guys, to let you know where we are. Rainbow Park, started that project, we've been stripping the parking lot, the basketball court, the walkway, it's going to end up with an eight foot wide by probably 650 feet of walking path over there, which is kind of cool, so we'll have that. It'll have a pickleball court, a 30 by 45 new basketball court, six parking spaces, one dedicated, at least six, maybe seven. We're going to try, if we can get six, great, if we can't, it'll be a total of six regular spaces potentially, and we'll definitely add one handicap, dedicated handicap space, which would be nice, so.
Is that going to be crowded, or is that blocked?
It's all blocked out. So this is all thanks to the community foundation grant that we received, so. Kenny, were you able to talk to her, or did you get a chance to get a response from her on the pickup of the equipment, playground?
She was out today. I'll call her tomorrow.
Yeah, so we're hoping to get it in, timing, it's a little wet around the edges still, we have, you know, it's been a wet winter, but...
It wasn't bad, was it?
It wasn't too bad.
I went and looked at it, it wasn't as bad as I thought it would be.
So it'll be nice, we're, the plan right now with the basketball court, well, it will be, like I said, 30 feet, so if you pull in, you have the parking spaces, and then the parking spaces will face the basketball court, and then the basketball court, the goal will be in the center of the 40 foot, 45 foot wide section, and the goal will be in a way where balls won't be bouncing towards cars, hopefully. Won't be going out towards the playground, won't be going to the ditch, they'll be going to the open grassy area behind it, so, which would be nice, so. The path will tie into the pickleball court, the basketball court, and the shelter house, and obviously the parking lot. So it will be all in a good grade, so it will be handicap accessible over there, complete, which would be nice. Still working, trying to come up with a game plan to see if we can somehow partner up for another phase, potentially next year, with tortoise, so we can maybe make a walkway and create a path to them and open up, clean up that fence row. We don't have enough funding to do everything this year, but we can do...
Get the picnic table over there?
Yep, get the picnic table out of ditch, make it a nice ditch and a nice approach to them, so.
Why is the picnic table in the ditch?
I wasn't there when it happened, and I don't know what it was moved for.
So are we going to put a little plaque over there, community foundation?
Oh, absolutely, every one of the projects, we try to think of.
There and on the road, on the street, if some people know where it's at, there's not even a street sign telling them, but playgrounds there, so.
Yeah, we'll sign it up a little bit, but I want to be careful how quick we do a lot of it, because that's our next community crossing grant location, is that street, all that drainage, all that's going to be in the next community crossing, we'll try to go after, so. On a even more exciting, I mean, that to me is exciting, just standing there thinking that, I grew up for a couple of years over there on Glad Street, thinking about the kids that, you know, we used to play ball in yards and the stuff that we, you know, the things that are going to be there and opportunity for people. We didn't count that as much of a part when I grew up, so it's kind of cool.
I think once we get it there, we need to drop fires and all the metal boxes over in that subdivision, and have just an open house day.
Almost have like a hen over day over there.
Worked in over dedication for that part.
Have a cookout.
We'll have Bob from out take some pictures.
Free hot dogs.
Another very exciting opportunity came about today, Scott, Davidson and I had an opportunity to go have lunch at MTM, and they're wanting to sponsor a August 6th car show here at the park, some music, kids jumping around, food trucks, just everything, basically. And it'll be a potential for just an amazing event, details will come, but I mean, I want to bring it to you guys, because we're putting together a lot of the plan right now, planning part of it right now, to see what we can do with it, but obviously that will come through you guys at the Parks Board meeting, we'll have more details for Scott to be able to deliver. But to say the least, it was one of the most exciting, of all the things that we've done, it was one of the most exciting events that I felt like to be a part of, so it was just really neat.
Because you like cars.
No, I really don't.
You don't?
Nope, I'm not a car guy, I would, I've been looking for turn signal fluid on my vehicle for a long time, I know nothing about that. But I'm not a car guy, but I was impressed with the cars and concepts and thoughts and the excitement that was around it.
He's a crowd guy, he knows there's going to be a big crowd.
It's going to be a big crowd.
He is a crowd guy, and he's a talker at first, so.
I'm trying to bring four to 600 cars, show cars on this property. If they bring four, that's the problem, I can't wait for us to solve.
I mean, where people going to park?
That's the exciting part, truly, was just wait it out, they'll find a, they'll find a place.
Better get started at back working a little.
If you build it, they will come.
You know that's the true point, yeah.
So, you know, we got to do a little coordinating, because along with that, I shared with them, the DNR grant is just right around the corner, it'll get pretty crazy, so we're going to have to really plan things to be able to continue to have our festivals stay with our attention. You know, the last thing you want to do is have all these nice things planned and organized, and then just blow it all up with construction everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be a coordinated... It's gonna be a coordinated process, the, you know, it's gonna be exciting, but challenging, but hopefully the people will see that, we gotta keep it safe for the kids, but.
Sure.
That was a fun event, in my opinion, so. That's basically the two items I got, so keep that in mind. Anything else from the D N R?
Would you remind Rick to send the three of us that link that he was going to?
Yes, and speaking to Rick, I know you guys asked to have him come to the meetings.
Right.
He's planning to be at every first meeting, because, uh, he shared with me, he has every third Tuesday, he's a deacon, he's on the deacon board for his church.
Right.
And they have their.
Church, every, once a month.
So I figured once a month, so he'll, he'll be, I told Linda to just put him on your department heads, and he'll plan to be here.
Okay. Sounds great.
Anything else for Keith? Old business, go green committee.
Well, I am not her back from Candace like she promised, she'd email me, so something must happen, but I'm gonna try to give her a call tomorrow. You said Creed was interested?
Yes, yes, Creed, Creed is still interested in being on the committee.
Creed, Creed Green is interested in being on the Creed Committee, yeah.
Three Greens.
She realized we didn't have her.
Saying that.
Three or four times. Yes, no, she's still interested.
I'm, I'm supposed to work, I got a couple of people. I know, I keep hammering at it.
Yeah.
Redbud trees.
We started it, it was exciting, they came in on, uh, Sunday, we called Scott and figured out where to put them at, I did put them in a, okay, it's like, let's try.
Yeah, no, that's.
Uh, we unloaded five hundred trees, they're about five and a half, six foot tall, so we planted, some of the Southwestern Boys Baseball Team are helping with the planning, they're gonna be helping tomorrow, and I think Thursday, uh, we started here, got some planted, and dropped off some to some residents, so had a lot of people calling, learning them, and we're gonna.
We met with the Methodist Church today, they're gonna take several.
The, the library.
Okay, pretty.
Yeah.
We had a lot of people leaving out, close the side.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Website. Um, we'll have a meeting this Thursday at eleven o'clock, same room that we had.
Can you meet about ten thirty? Can you come a little bit early?
Yeah, you can, if you want.
Now, can you? You, we're gonna be there at ten thirty, but we want.
I do have a job.
You to come, but I need to, I'm supposed to be working that day too.
At ten thirty, well.
I'm off that day, so Kyle's gonna take over.
Okay.
Yeah, you got it.
Where's that meeting at?
I'll call and see if, uh, they can, they, so we wanna go at ten thirty instead of eleven?
No, no, not then, we are gonna go just us, we could be at ten thirty, 'cause that way we can all kind of be on the same page of what we want, so we're not like trying to figure it out during.
And you know what this means about, right?
Yes.
This means it's only about the face page or website.
Cover page, yep.
Okay, yeah, I can be there at ten thirty.
Okay, perfect.
A P R plan. There's still a lot of discussion going on about what we're gonna do with those funds, so.
I guess just to keep it on our mind, this building, so we've got.
And we're gonna have our first brief meeting on it next Tuesday, just to talk.
I think that's as long as we'll.
Yes, to get it.
Uh, approval of tree floral initiative committee and the planning members.
Well, we talked about it, kind of read it, so, um.
And y'all had a copy of it last week.
The tree floral initiative committee charge, the tree floral initiative committee shall serve as an advisory committee to the town council, the town of Hanover, the committee shall proactively seek grants and possible fundraising ideas to provide for the charity needs to improve upon the town's environment. The committee will work in conjunction with other town committees, groups as appropriate. The tree floral initiative committee shall consist of up to ten members, including two council members, the town building inspector, and the community residents of business representations of the town. Members shall be appointed by the town council subject to renewal, should both parties agree. So, right now, there's me, Treeva, and Amy, and Rick. So, any resident who'd be interested in being on this committee, that would be awesome. If you wanna plant flowers and plant trees all over Hanover, pretty trees. Did you want a tree for your garden, Amy? Do you need a red bud tree? But free.
You can go, you can check this out.
Yeah.
Give you about five of those trees, and you put them up on that side of the bus, and you make sense.
That red one.
How about red ones?
The red, the pink, the purple.
So I'll need a motion to the House. I make a motion to ask how high do they get, or is it twenty to thirty feet, charge as we. I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the first side.
Uh, fifteen to thirty.
Yeah, approval of the tree floral initiative committee. Cleanup hen over days. Uh, residents are asking, all right, last year we did it July twenty, or July nineteenth through the twenty-fourth, you wanna go ahead and schedule that for July eighteenth through the twenty-third this year?
How did that go during that time?
What's that?
How did that go, do you remember?
It went fine.
I think it went pretty good, what'd you have, about three or four dumpsters for?
Four, I believe.
Four, I think, yeah.
I, I, I mean, from our conversation, what we found, I mean, we feel like it went better than it has for.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, by far.
We collected a whole dumpster of recycles and were able to.
Oh, yeah, that was good, yeah, keep, yeah.
You know, was able to do that.
Yeah.
Got a lot of money back.
Kind of a, yeah, we got a little bit, probably paid for two of the dumpsters, or three of them, actually, is what it, no, paid for about two and a half dumpsters.
That's good.
So.
Okay, so we want to do that on, uh, July eighteen through the twenty-third, which is about the same time, right as last year, Monday through Saturday.
Yeah, it's fine. Had it brought in on the.
So it's just one weekend?
Fifteen.
One full week.
Feel like we did it different last year, feel like we did a week, and we gave a couple of weekends.
I think we had a weekend.
Yeah, we had, I thought we had.
What is it?
I think we had a weekend, like you might have it brought in on fifteen.
Weekend, didn't it?
What are the hours for that?
Twenty-four.
I feel like they always run about seven to ten.
Saturday.
Seven, four.
Maybe two, like maybe Saturday. Maybe extend that a little bit, so people like get off around that, is it, it is?
Yeah, that's why we.
You don't wanna do it two full weeks.
No, but two weekends, because two weekends on the Saturday.
No, so if we started, if we started that.
So the sixteenth through the twenty-third, Saturday through Saturday?
Sunday, maybe not so many hours.
That sounds all right, Scott.
What was that?
Sixteen through the twenty-third, which is Saturday through Saturday?
Yeah, that's fine.
You gotta pick up a Sunday in it.
Yes.
Sixteenth is Saturday, you have them brought in on the fifteenth, two of them.
Can you get a hold of Chris?
Yeah, well. Did whoever Keith had bring the dumpster for the metal?
That was crude.
Okay.
I've been trying to get them to bring it on permanently.
Yeah, 'cause I got a.
You've got a mess of it now, and we can keep you, so. You know, when people come over, people's been utilizing our dumpster, uh, dump right now as well.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-five dollar dumpsters.
Really?
Again, that's not a, that's not a moneymaker, it's a convenience.
But, but we don't advertise it either.
No, it's just, it's convenient.
We hope it.
I think if we advertised it.
When we get your website.
Exactly.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I stopped, you know, Keith and Chad Watson the other day, they were getting ready to run to the hilltop, and I said, I didn't know anything about that, so he turned around.
Yeah, exactly.
They said it was eighteen dollars on the hilltop, but twenty-five, and you're right here, and you just go throw it in the load.
Say gas.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yes.
That's a big drink, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Our, our.
Okay, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash one, establishing senior citizens advisory council.
I had a, in my folder to do in two thousand eighteen, just saw it the other day, but I wasn't sure if we had, if the board still wanted to do that, um, is there an advisory council, senior?
Uh, can you read it so we can kind of?
Yeah, I can read it.
Yeah.
Uh, the town council desires to establish a senior citizens advisory council, the town park board sponsored the senior citizens advisory program, senior citizens advisory council would be made up of five members, the town council member, a senior citizen, co-chair director, and then three senior citizens that attend regularly. Uh, the town desires to, um, that the senior citizen advisory meet at least twice a year, and the cost of the weekly senior meal each Friday would be four dollars, rather than by the council. Does that sound like something we talked about?
We did, we have.
Yeah.
In two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, that's good, since two thousand eighteen.
Then we did, then we did.
How often do you witness somebody?
Not you though.
I said it, but it hasn't happened.
I don't hear any rumors.
That was a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it did.
Yeah.
Yeah, the reason I sent it in September, or eighteen.
Oh, eighteen.
I wonder if that stopped September eighteen. Well, now that's to stop the work over.
No, that would've been, but did, did everybody not agree or something?
I think the match is not.
I just thought I would bring it up because it, it seemed like something we kinda slipped up, slipped in the cracks.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
You too.
Ladies, what do you think?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind having a copy of that. I'm gonna say we would get a copy, have a copy of that. We've never received anything to, to let us know about that.
Well, it's, it's not happened.
It's not happened.
No, but I would like to have a copy of what you were projecting.
Well, 'cause we want you guys to look over it and, and then come back to the council with, yeah.
Just table it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, just table it.
Yeah.
Or table it?
Yeah.
So that way you guys can review it, and then put their heads together and read, hash it, what do you think?
Ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash three, establishing penny cash for senior citizens.
I don't see a problem with that.
Always needs a second motion on that, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just write, you just wrote the talk.
We can.
Oh, I did add in, uh, we did add the, uh, Kim and I met, uh, the custodian of the funds would be the organization's president. What else did we add? Thought you added the fund number, yeah, so it'd be, uh, it's actually an appropriation, we didn't do a fund because there already is a, uh, number.
Right, right.
So they're just an appropriation, two-nine-two-zero-zero-zero-five-zero-zero. The rest of it is the same.
So how much were we going to make it, three hundred dollars?
Three hundred.
Is that what we're?
Um, make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash three, establishing penny cash for senior citizens in, in the amount of three hundred.
Any discussion? All of the papers out?
Aye.
And that is under a trial basis to see how it goes out for six months.
Ain't no problem action to it.
Any other old business? New business, capital system management needs be simulated, don't you? You got that, don't you?
Yes, uh, there's a resolution, actually, that I still go with it.
Yeah.
That's the one that just passed.
That's what we just passed.
Uh, this one, um, so when the, during the audit, there was a discussion regarding the need for a capital asset management policy, uh, the new program, and I could let Keith talk about it more, but the program that you all have approved and are beginning to use to track, uh, assets that the town owns, um, it's gonna do this on its own, basically, um, but this allows the town to comply with a few things, and then also give the clerk treasurer in his office, um, some guidance on managing assets and allowing some assets to depreciate, or really, uh, that wasn't necessarily happening. Uh, so I think this is something that's important, and probably is more than important, it's probably required. Uh, this has been reviewed, I think they actually reviewed it.
Yep.
Um, so I, what the resolution is, is adopting the management policy, uh, so I'm not gonna read the policy since four and a half pages, you know, wanna sit with me and read that, um, but I'll read the resolution. Resolution twenty-two-two, a resolution to adopt the capital asset management policy for the town of Hanover, Indiana, whereas the town council of the town of Hanover, Indiana is responsible for the administration and delivery of local government services within the town, in accordance with the authority allowed by Indiana Code thirty-six dash four. Whereas the council is authorized to adopt a capital asset management policy for the town, whereas a capital asset management policy is desirable in order to facilitate the preparation of financial statements in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles, monitor the town's assets, infrastructure, and needs over time, and in order to satisfy recommendations and requirements of the Indiana State Board of Accounts. Whereas the town council believes that for the reasons stated above, adopting and implementing a ca- capital asset management policy is prudent, desirable, recommended, and the best and appropriate course of action to achieve the above, and therefore doing so is also in the best interest of the citizens of the town. Therefore, be it resolved that, uh, the town, the town of Hanover Capital Management Policy, copy of which is attached here too and may be part of, is adopted effective today. The policy adopted here supersedes or replaces any prior policy, resolution, or ordinance uh, that may contradict any term herein. It's a lot of hundred dollar words in there.
Yeah.
There's two places beside, so it'll be the, uh, resolution and then the actual policy.
I make a motion, we have approved resolution two thousand twenty-two dash two, the capital asset management policy.
My second.
Any discussion? All of the papers out?
Aye. I made the motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did.
My second.
Okay.
Um, the need to appoint a representative to the S I R P C. Dave still interested in doing that?
No.
Okay.
He's done it for ten years, and he said he liked it, step size.
Okay, so.
Do you think how often those meetings were?
Huh?
Did he say, I mean, at Indiana? Like, once a quarter, or?
I don't know.
I don't, I have not any idea. I'm sitting here looking at the emails that I get, I'm thinking it's like once a quarter.
So we'll have to think of somebody.
It doesn't say in the letter? Oh, yes, it does, meets quarterly, on the second Wednesday of the month of January, April, August, and October.
And aren't they held in for sales? Does it say what time they're held? Is it, is it today, right? Two silver lunch, I think.
Is that the same Wednesday?
It's, you said it's the first Wednesday, the second, the second?
Second Wednesday, of January, April, August, and October.
I know Dave went through the day.
Are you taking that?
I'm thinking about it. I was on it once before. Huh?
Seems a bit.
All right.
You want me to do it?
I'll do it. Right, you have a job. Oops.
I'm trying to go between.
That's what he told me.
I know.
If you're not out, I'm listening.
Any other new business? Sewer adjustments.
Uh, so what, do we have to, when we appoint, do we have to make a motion for it or anything, or am I missing something? Right, so what, do we have to, when we appoint, do we have to make a motion for it or anything, or am I missing something, do we have to do that? Just, just gonna be, okay, just making sure. Sorry.
Sewer adjustments.
Okay, um, got a sewer adjustment request from Britten Hansley. Looks like the lease has been fixed, and she's requesting adjustment of one oh seven sixteen for, uh, the key valves. Make a motion, have those still approved?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hold the first eye.
Aye.
Accounts payable.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payables in the amount of ninety-seven thousand nine seventy-four ninety-one.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hold the first eye.
Aye.
Anything else?
One thing was regarding the audit, I did send the, uh, there's a letter that's required to come from my office, um, outlining litigation and stuff like that. It was nice to write that letter. We didn't have anything to report, so.
That's a good thing, yes.
All right, announcements, Hannover Park Board will meet Tuesday, April fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at five thirty. Before the Hannover Town Council meeting at six P M, here at the Hannover Community Center, two hundred Spruce Lane, Hannover, Indiana, four seven two four three. Any other announcements?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Hold the reliever, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.